All right, we're gonna call to order our regular meeting of November 4th in the very first evening meeting of the Hamilton County Commission, at least in a very long time. Mr. Kirk, roll call please.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Beck?
Here.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Here.
Commissioner Eversol?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Helton?
He's not here.
Dr. Highlander?
Here.
Dr. Mackey?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Commissioner Shipley?
Here.
Chairman Smith?
Here. Give the invocation and pledge will be by Commissioner Beck, so please rise.
Chairman, we have with us today Father Alex Hernandez, the silica of saints Peter and Paul. We lead us in prayer, and I would ask that each one of us consider Commissioner Mackey's loss of his sister this week, so keep him in prayer as we pray for this county commission. Father Hernandez.
Heavenly Lord, you have provided for each and every one of us one more day of life, and for this we thank you. Help us that each and every one of us, regardless for our reason here, that we would use our time here today to do what is right, to do what is good for ourselves and for those around us. Amen.
Turn and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we have no presentations, but we do have a public hearing on the petition for the Windy Ridge Residential Infrastructure Development District. Before we get started, just to let everybody know, we will have the applicant speak. They will have eight minutes to speak. We will then allow opposition to this petition to speak. You will have a total of 10 minutes. So if there are a lot of you that would like to speak, I would ask you to be mindful of those behind you. Try not to be repetitive in comments so that everybody has an opportunity to say what they want to say. After that 10 minutes, the applicant will have a two-minute response from that, and at that time, we will, of course, other than questions from this body, we'll close a public hearing on that topic. So to get us started, Madam Attorney, would you please give us a quick introduction to the purpose of this public hearing this afternoon?
Sure, Chairman. So this is a relatively new process. It is a law that went into effect in 2024. If implemented, and if we, if the governing body decided to adopt this petition, I dare say that this county would be the first to do so. One thing that I think is important to note is other counties have implemented policies and procedures before adopting these petitions. Knox County is one of them. Essentially, what the governing body will be doing today is listening to the petition to see if they put forth enough of a case to establish the district pursuant to the law. The governing body does have the ability to change the district boundaries. They do also have the ability to modify the proposal, so please keep that in mind, and they also shall consider the objections and protests, if any.
Thank you, ma'am. So with that, we will, excuse me.
Will there be any time for rebuttal?
There will. There will be eight minutes, 10 minutes, and then two minutes to respond.
Two minutes, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Do we have the applicant? Before we get started, name and address for the record, and we need eight minutes on the timer, please.
Thank you. Mike Price, M.A.P. Engineers, Chattanooga, Tennessee. So thank you, Commissioners, for the public hearing that is being held this afternoon as it relates to a request to create a residential infrastructure development district for the proposed improvements to Eldridge Road. But I would advocate, as you listen to this presentation, that you consider this not in the fact that it is gonna be taking place in District Nine, Commissioner Highlander's district, but what if this was taking place in your district? Is this a tool? Is this an opportunity that you can utilize to address issues as it relates to infrastructure needs in your own district? So this would be the way I would ask that you would be considering as you listen to the discussion this afternoon. So I've seen the posts and comments about Eldridge Road that had been made. Okay, my button's not working. What I need to do?
Here we go. Anyone just hit enter on that, or? Okay, great, thank you.
So the development is for 463 acres, of which are proposed, and we've agreed to maximum limit of this to 300 homes. So what that means is, we are talking about a density of 1.5 homes per acre. Now, the commission recently got through the debate of Plan Hamilton. Five of you voted against it. I dare say, as it relates to a proposed density of one and a half homes per acre, no one would argue against that. So that's a very low density with regards to what is being proposed on the property. What we're looking at is 1.83 miles of riverfront, over 200 boat docks is what we envision going in through here. We estimate the home values to be somewhere between 750,000 to 1.2 million dollars. When it's all said and done, this would be approximately a $300 million dollar development. Here's some of the lakefront views taken from the property. Phase one, so phase one would be 39 lots. Thirty-nine lots are the first 300 to come in. If we look at 39 lots starting off, then, each of these lots are probably gonna average right around $100,000 per lot. So in the first phase, as we would get started, as the work is taking place there on Eldridge Road, you're looking at creating approximately $3.9 million of additional valuation to the property. The need for off-site improvements. I don't think anybody here is gonna argue that Eldridge Road needs improvements. The road width is anywhere from 12 to 22 feet. It's in poor condition. You have poor roadside drainage. The county fire marshal has access concerns. There's limited shoulders. But there is one important aspect as it relates to this, and that is, there is an established 50-foot right-of-way along Eldridge Road. This has been confirmed by surveyors and has been confirmed by county staff. Therefore, there is sufficient right-of-way to complete the work that would be needed and is what is being proposed today. I would also point out that none of this area has public water supply. Here's some pictures of what Eldridge Road looks like, as taken from Street View. Now, the process. So one of the things I'd like to point out is that both houses, state of Tennessee, passed this unanimously. In today's world, that's a little unique, because typically Republicans and Democrats typically find themselves on opposite sides of the issue as it relates to state and federal issues. But in this instance, every single member, including all the Hamilton County delegation, voted for this. So the process works where the county needs to establish a development district, infrastructure development district. We agree that that is probably the first step. In conjunction with that, we would see that this should be part of that discussion, so that hopefully at the time that the Infrastructure Development Act is passed by this county, this one comes before the body at the same time for a vote, because we see both of these going hand-in-hand. You need to have your rules established. We need to understand those rules. Then it needs to go before this body for a vote. Now, I've had discussions with Lee Router, and I appreciate him taking the time to talk with us. He has questions. I don't have the answers. However, I know that there are people smarter than I that can get this figured out with him as far as how this works. But I do know that the valuation of the land becomes the key component, because what ends up happening of the 463 acres, essentially, the county puts a lien that covers the bond amount. But as the property continues to develop, you continue to add valuation, which continues to cover the cost of the bond, so that the county is not at risk. It does not cause any sort of, based upon what was passed, does not create any sort of issues as it relates to your AAA bond rating. That is my understanding. So the cost is borne by whom? The cost is borne by the new residents that would be in this development, of some 300 homes. What we would propose is that first, that as soon as the house or the lot is purchased, there's a $5,000 cost that goes into the tax books, into the record, to the county to help relieve that cost of the bond. Each year, there's a $1,200 cost that is borne by that property owner, has a special tax assessment that they pay. Every five years, it goes up by $100. Now, what we did when we looked at developing this, we looked at trying to go through and reduce the bond and have it completely paid off in 20 years. We didn't look at a 30-year life. We looked at trying to do it a 20-year life, to be conservative. We've all seen downturns. So what did we do? What did we do? We looked at, first of all, assuming that you're going to develop no more than 20 homes per year. I think that's pretty darn conservative. Now, if you look at the amount of water line to be installed, you're looking at roughly 6,100 feet of water line and approximately $1 million in cost. We would install fire hydrants along the way. If you look at Eldridge Road, we would widen it to 20 feet with three-foot wide shoulders, and the estimated cost on that is some 1.6 million dollars. This talks again about our build-out. We assume, I said 20, what I meant to say is 15 homes would be constructed per year, or lots sold. 20-year build-out, very conservative. Most subdivisions at 300 lots sell out much faster than 20 years. This shows you how much revenue that you would get years 1 through 5, 6 through 10, 11 through 15, and 16 through 20. So again, we would look at this being retired in 20 years. The only cost that the county has is establishing the bond, yearly administration, and possibly bond insurance. Now, again, this is subject to what this body puts together, but in other words, you're getting infrastructure improvements for basically pennies on the dollar, if any at all. So with that, I will reserve any time I have left for the rebuttal. Now, thank you for your time, unless you have questions.
I do have a couple of ones, so let's go to those first. Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Price, did I understand you to say no other county in Tennessee has done this?
There have been Knox County, and I believe the city of Franklin has passed the act in terms of developing the policy for their jurisdictions to be able to utilize. No one has utilized it yet. So as far as I know, I think that what county attorney said is correct. We would be the first.
Infrastructure. What is gonna happen to the sewage?
We would be on septic.
And the ground perks well enough to handle that?
We have very good soils in this particular part of the site, where we would be able to do that. Yes, sir.
And Mike, I'm curious, why so few homes per acre?
Well, that's a great question. What we looked at was this. I knew that there was gonna be an outcry, whether we proposed 100 homes or 200, or if we did two homes per acre and we said, hey, we're gonna do 800-plus homes. So what we tried to do was to come up with a number that we thought would be viable, make it a nice subdivision, have lots of green space area, but at the end of the day, not try to overdevelop. Now, what I have read on social media, 300 homes and 1.5 homes per acre somehow is overdeveloped. I'm not certain that I agree with that, and I really find that a argument that I can't accept on merit.
Is this that property where you can jump from high up into the river?
Now, I would never try that, but no, I don't, with the parts that I have walked through there, there's really not a cliff setting where you could jump through there. There are steep slopes, certainly, but not where I would find that one could jump out into the water, and that'd be a safe condition.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Browner, I have a couple of questions for you, if I would. I've looked at this, and I'm real concerned about the county's financial liability if this does not succeed. I have talked to quite a few residents who live there, and I do need to get with our county engineer. They have on their deed where they go to the ditch, and they say there's not 50 feet, while the, one of the fellows said to me, because some surveyor marked it off, does that mean I lose my property? And I said, I don't think so, but we need to look into that with the county engineer and the legal. But my main question right now is, I'm concerned about the county's liability if this doesn't proceed as, we're the ones who sign off on the bond. Is that correct, Mr. Browner?
There are a lot of pieces to this financing mechanism that, to be honest, right now, I do not understand. I don't know. I've checked with our financial advisor, PFM, who works throughout the state on issues, and they are new to these, to the Rita Act also, don't know the answer. So I really can't give you a very good answer right now, except I think it's a little bit premature for us to go into this, just because I don't know the answers. It may be, turn out to be a wonderful tool for us to use, but right now, I would recommend being hesitant on that right now.
Mr. Chairman, can I answer that?
You would not, excuse me. If you were asked right now for us to add the bond to our bond debt, would you be willing to accept that unequivocally?
I guess I would say I would recommend against it, but if there are seven or six votes, we will work it out and figure it out. But yes, right now, I'd recommend patience on this.
Okay, thank you, sir. I would agree with you on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yeah, Mr. Highlander asked some of what I was gonna ask, and Mr. Browner answered some. But I need to make sure I understand it. The developer ain't gonna have no money up, right? We're gonna develop this road, and we're gonna get our money back. That's it, 100%, correct?
That's not exactly correct. The way
Sounds like it.
The way the process works is a bond is issued. So we'll say, for a number, round number, $3 million. That's the number. That number, that money is set aside. A contractor is hired, the work is completed, it is paid out of that bond amount. It's like any other bond, and it has to start the process of being paid back. Now, to answer Mr. Highlander's question and concerns as it relates to the county, a lien is placed on the property. The property value today, just on the undeveloped land, is $5 million, okay? $5 million. As you continue to develop each of the phases in the subdivision, the land development, the land value goes up. Like I said, if you did just the first 39 lots, that's adding another $3.9 million. So in other words, conservatively, at that point, when you just have completed not even hardly 10%, you're at an $8 million valuation, and you have first lien rights. You're ahead of the mortgage of a bank, so there is, from that standpoint, I see no financial, even if you have the economic downturn ahead of 2008, you're certainly in a position where you're more than covered in terms of what the valuation of what that bond amount would be.
But the bottom line is, county's on the hook for the bond. The developer's out till he starts paying back, correct?
The developer and each property owner that buys in that subdivision is?
Okay, that's good.
Commissioner Baker? Thanks. Lee, what were some of the other questions that you were trying to find out?
Well, again, part of the questions are, I think we're supposed, we can have the ability to issue a, I think it's a industrial development district that could potentially issue the debt, but I still believe the county is gonna be contingently liable on that. So again, it's this one, there are just a lot of questions revolving, if the development doesn't take place, how do we pay this debt off in the early years? When not enough property has been sold, how's that debt get paid off? Will it be tax-exempt debt that will issue the bonds out, or will they be taxable bonds? There are just a lot of pieces that we just don't know, and we should definitely, again, this is just one transaction. My guess would be, there may be a lot coming behind it, and we really need to develop policies to think about these things in advance before approving it. Would be my recommendation.
So how long, how long do you think that would take? Fair amount of time. Obviously, we take as much time as we need, but how long do you think it would take?
Again, it's hard to say, because right now, there have been zero adopted
Any word?
Rita, yeah, now, they've taken place in Texas and in other states, but in Tennessee, as far as we have found and PFM has looked, there have been no, none of these set up. So, you know, round number, six months, but would be a guess.
Okay. And then, what, how much bonds are being requested with this? Had, if we had everything lined up, and it was, you know, you were comfortable and all that?
The documentation is 2.6 million, I believe.
Okay. Mike, what road does Eldridge Road run into?
Perchwood Pike.
How's that? I'm not that, I mean, I've been there, but it's been a few years. What's the traffic on that road?
In terms of daily count?
Yeah.
This would be a guess, but I would think you're probably looking at 3,000 to 5,000, but that's a guess.
Steve, is that, is that a highly trafficked road?
It's highly trafficked, a lot of growth on it, a lot more growth than there has been in the past.
Okay. Mike, who's the developer? Sarath. Sarath? Sarath? S-A-R-A-T-H. Sarath. S-A-R. Is that local? Yes, sir. Sarath. Okay. That's it, thanks. Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question, can I ask of Lee, please? So Lee, obviously, you're gonna have to take some time here and get your staff involved, and like Commissioner Baker just said, I think you need to take all the time you need, right? But where I'm wanting clarification is, if we were to do something like this, whether it was this property or down the road and other property, the county would get the first mortgage, even if somebody's built a house on it, or somebody's built a driveway and a swimming pool and a garage, we would still have the first mortgage on that property? So if the thing went belly up, we would then take over all of the property? Or what I don't understand is, each individual lot would be sold to a property owner, and then they would build on it. So how could we have the first lien on something that doesn't belong to the developer anymore?
Again, that would be something we would have to look into, along with the county attorney's staff. I simply, those are good questions that I just do not have the answer for right now.
Well, I'm all for you looking and taking the time you need and putting us something together. I think we should probably have some committee meetings about this, and have some open meetings, obviously, but let's have some committee meetings to discuss what rules and regulations, as they come along, so we can tweak them or untweak them, or do whatever need to be done. I think it could be, I mean, it, the state's obviously very interested in it, so it could be a very valuable tool. And I'm curious, but I would look for your leadership on this, though, because we didn't get a AAA bond rating by accident. You did it, your staff did it, the staff before you did it, and I sure don't wanna take any chances it's gonna jeopardize that, which leads me to my next question. If we were to do something like this, would that make it harder for us to be able to borrow more money the next school project we have to do, or the next education project that we're gonna do? I mean, would that tie up our ability to get more money towards our other projects that would be more important to the entire county?
Again, that'd be something we'd have to look at. On this particular issue of 2.6 million dollars, I don't know that that would really have much effect on our debt capacity, but again, I see this, if we decide this is a tool to use, I see it as growing quite a bit. And again, those would be questions. Again, I do not know how it would affect our debt capacity if we capacity if we extend this program. Obviously, just this one transaction would not create a significant burden in that regard, but, but I, I do see this multiplying.
Yeah, the ripple effect, that's where I'm getting at. I, I'm concerned about the ripple effect. If, if one project does this, then many, many, many more projects are gonna do this, and it might be the way to go. I don't know. I don't, I really don't know. So I'll keep an open mind, but, but I'm curious to find out what you all find out about this, and I trust your judgment. I have one more question, please. Um, can I ask Mike? Mike, what is your timeframe?
Well, I understand that the issues are complex, but also, and one, that if you cannot have to reinvent the wheel, you don't. So what I would do is, I would suggest that maybe the county look in terms of what Knox County has passed, because they already have one in place. They have probably gone through, many of the questions that you have today have probably been addressed when they went through that process. So I would think that look to them in terms of what they've done, Franklin, City of Franklin. It may take outside counsel, uh, to, to work with the county attorney to figure this out. Uh, one of the questions that, that, for instance, you just asked about the bond rating. Everything that I have read as it relates to this says it will not affect the county's bond rating, because it's not considered in the same financial bucket, I guess. Uh, but again, I didn't make very good econ engineering grades, so I don't really think that that's the opinion that you should take from me, other than I have read that based on some of the research that I've done by others.
And I appreciate that, I really do. But financial advice, we didn't get a triple A bond rating by accident.
True.
So financial advice, I'm gonna rely on our staff-
Hundred percent.
Highly qualified, state-of-the-art staff that we have doing wonderful job for Hamilton County, been for years. So I'm gonna rely on them. My question to you, though, is what is your timeframe?
My hope would be that this could be back before this body for a vote within three months. I think that when you look at, and I know we're hitting the, the holiday time period, I get it, but also what we're looking at is we need to hit a construction window, which will be coming up. If this passes, we need to get going in the spring. So we need to get under construction. So again, a lot of questions, I get it, but a lot of this ground has already been plowed by others, and so I think that we could play off of what they have determined, utilize that information, come then with a, with a resolution before this body that would then, after you go through your public hearings and the other processes, to figure out what is the right avenue for, for Hamilton County, and hopefully do that within that timeline.
So there's no zoning change? There's nothing that has to be changed by the planning commissioner or a zoning issue or?
The only thing that we have is the plat, the initial plat that goes before the planning commission, given the fact that we will not come out with a decision, which we know, what we will be doing on Monday is requesting a deferral, because the plat really cannot move forward until this issue gets resolved. So we're gonna defer it come Monday, but we're, we're teed up and ready to go just as soon as everything is in place to allow us to do that, hopefully.
So I guess by asking about zoning, so the density and the zoning, and I, I realize the plat's not been approved, and it will be later if, if it's approved, but, but as far as the property, I haven't seen a zoning map. Uh, this is the first I've seen of this information. Right. So is everything zoned properly for that, that amount of density and for what you're trying to do?
We're well under what we could do. So yes, there's A1 property, which, no sewers, so you'd be that one point five or whatever the number is, we're, we're half that, so yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Good. Mr. Commissioner Eversol?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Um, Eldridge Road has come up quite a bit over the last few months. As a matter of fact, we spent some time in the planning commission. I came out and opposed this project because the roads are not big enough. So now you're coming back saying, all right, county, you build the roads, you, you, uh, you widen it, you take out a loan, you take out a bond and, and we'll pay it back over time. Um, I, I, listening to Lee, I, I can't support this. I can't. I mean, it's, the way it's currently written and how it's, uh, is designed, you got our chief financial officer saying he doesn't trust it as it's written right now, I can't support it. Um, I think, I think we're way too early, way too premature to, to, to look at this thing. I mean, it's, uh, Eldridge Road, it doesn't even have, doesn't have black type on it, it's asphalt with chert on top of it. Uh, I don't think it's ever been paved, has it?
It's been paved, but it's been years and years. The, the other thing I would point out is-
Horse and buggy?
Probably, or close to it. But the other thing I would point out is that, the way you described it's not the way the process works. A bond is taken out, money is set aside, the developer then takes and has his own forces complete the work, so putting in the waterline, building the road. The county, all they basically are doing is overseeing the finances. All the work is done by the developer to county standards. Then if you think of Eldridge Road today, if it's paved, and it's twenty foot wide, and it has three foot shoulders, I think we're having a totally different discussion. Now, what I've heard, and I've had conversations with Mr. Browner, and you're welcome to, correct me if I'm wrong, what I have not heard him say is the way that you characterize it, what I've heard him say is he has questions. Not that he thinks that this is a flim flam type scheme, I've heard he has questions. I think they need to be addressed, and I agree with that, but I would not characterize it the way that, that it was basically seemed to indicate that there are, he's leaning against it. I've heard neither for or against, he just has questions.
I think he just said that if he would vote for it, he would encourage it.
If it was today, and I agree, but we're not voting today. What we're saying is, let's investigate, let him get the answers, and then bring him back to the body. If he comes back to the body and says, no, I'm against it, then that's a different discussion.
Right.
If he says he's for it.
Well, let me be clear on one thing you just said, the county's money. The county doesn't have money. Okay? The money that the county is, is obligated to use is taxpayer money. It's not money that we have, it's taxpayer money. And I think if you go out and do surveys of people in this area, it's their money, it's their taxpayer money, and they could, they want us doing other adventures with this and their taxpayer money other than this project, so.
So that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Um, I was hesitant to say anything, because, you know, oftentimes you hear people say, don't ask a question, you don't know the answer to, but I've got questions, don't know the answer to them, so the only way I'm gonna get to the answer is to ask it, I suppose. Um, and, and, and I, I respect, um, Mr. Browner's thoughts here. Um, w- w- we need to understand this better and how it would affect Hamilton County. Mr. Price, typically, um, as I understand it, and I know just enough really to be dangerous, uh, but as I understand it, in most of these development situations, a developer will purchase a piece of property, they'll put in infrastructure, and then they will take that as equity to a bank, uh, to obtain a loan, to then begin building homes and selling them to pay back that loan. Th- th- this is kinda like that. Um, I guess maybe, but, but the county is, is assisting with it in a way. Uh, what, what, why, what, what is the, how, how is this like, what, what's the benefit to the developer in this? Um, I'm just trying to see why, why do this? What, what's the?
Because what we have is a county that, while we do have a triple A bond rating, and to Mr. Eversol's point, we are strapped as it relates to being able to take care of some of these infrastructure costs. What I have heard throughout Plan Hamilton debate and others is that we want developers to do more. Okay, I, I agree. You're, you've got, got a point. Now we have a mechanism, let developers do more. And how much does it cost the taxpayers of this county to do that? Nothing. It doesn't take county money. This is not county's money, understand? What this is doing is posting a bond. The only people that pay this bond off are the people inside of the development district. It's very similar to what took place in East Ridge with the Bass Pro and all that development that took place around Camp Jordan. It's been a wonderful success. They use sales taxes as a mechanism to help pay for that infrastructure. All we're doing here is we're taking property taxes of those residents that are new, not old, not have been there forever, or just moved in, or outside the district. It is taking their tax dollars, additional tax dollars that are put on them to pay for the infrastructure that everybody gets to enjoy. What a great program.
One thing, um, and I voted for several projects, uh, TIFs and pilots. Um, those are typically bigger projects that are on, um, oftentimes really challenging properties, uh, to develop. Brownfield sometimes, I mean, it makes sense, or, or affordable housing projects. I've, I've, I don't think we've had one of those the last three years, but, um, but we've had a, a lot of projects that we have, uh, voted on for pilots to encourage more affordable housing in our community. Um, and, and all of those, um, save the Bintiff, uh, the portion of the tax revenue for Hamilton County schools has always stayed with Hamilton County schools. I- is that part of this proposal?
No. The way that this works is this, say that for sake of discussion, that I bought a lot in here, and if it were like any other lot, assume my tax bill is three thousand dollars a year, I'm still gonna pay that three thousand dollars a year. So the county gets one hundred percent of what they would normally get. The difference is, my tax bill won't be three thousand, it's gonna be forty-two hundred dollars. The twelve hundred dollars goes to reduce that bond.
So the individual property owner who purchases a lot in this development will pay on top of, almost like a special assessment?
That's exactly what this is. It's a tax district that we're setting up.
So it's like a, a homeowner's association, um, in advance?
Correct.
Interesting.
Along with the remaining land that is undeveloped, as, all of that is used as collateral.
Okay. Well, I'm glad I asked my question. Thank you for answering it. Chairman, thanks for the time.
Commissioner Shipley?
In your first part, talking that you was telling about how good this tool can be. So after we went on talking, and we found out the bond, so, and we do this, say, we just, um, we sat at president, many builders are gonna want bonds, where do we go from there? Do we push bonds on every development then? And the next question, Eldridge Road, how much of it's gonna be redone?
Approximately one mile.
So you're not even doing the whole road?
No, sir, we're not.
Well, I'm gonna tell you what, I'm gonna stop right there. I'm with Commissioner Eversol, they won't call for a vote, I'm ready to vote tonight.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Beck?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this has been a great discussion, great Q and A. Uh, and Mike, you're a great presenter, and how can I say no? Uh, but our CFO has said he's not comfortable with this, and, uh, I really can't go against what he has said, uh, because the responsibility about the research and all of that is on his staff and Ms. Monell's staff. So, you know, I'm gonna take the staff recommendation. Uh, at all times, I'm gonna take the, uh, commissioner in that district's, um, desires to fulfill the request of his constituents. I'm gonna always take that side. Uh, so I've had these, uh, questions like this in the past, and I've heard you do a great job presenting in the past, but this time I'll have to say that I'd rather be comfortable, I'd rather have our CFO comfortable with this proceeding before I could support it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Got it. All right. Final question before we move to the public comment. Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you. Um, Mike, you, you do a lot of, you're a good presenter. I, I grant you, you really are. Uh, that is one mile, have you clocked it, the distance?
Yes, sir.
From Birchwood Pike to your entrance?
Yes.
Okay, and it will be up to county standards, correct?
Yes, and I've talked with the emergency services who are here today, and they will state that that would be perfectly fine as far as they're concerned.
Let me ask you, how about the south side? Do you think the people there that go in there will ever cross that rickety bridge and go to the south side?
I do every time I drive that way.
You've driven over there?
Yeah.
What size vehicle did you drive?
An F-150 pickup truck.
I have a three, a thirty-five hundred Dodge. I was scared to death going over it, the thing was shaking like a leaf. And the, and it's not, it's not considered safe. It's ready, they said twenty-some years ago, it needed to be replaced at the cost of, at that time, twenty million dollars. So, uh, whether, whether that's the right amount or not, I may, but I'm gonna tell you, if there, if and when there are three hundred houses in there, it is substantially shorter for people going toward Chattanooga to take the south, uh, Eldridge Road and go in. And if there is a traffic problem, they will go on the south side, which is not safe, and which is, some, one place it's like ten feet on the south side, and the north side too. Uh, let me, I have one other question for you. When you put, are you gonna make the roads in the subdivision up to county standards, where the county will accept those roads?
Yes, that is the plan to, to do that.
So they would be able to take fire engines all the way in back through there?
You'd be able to take a fire engine all the way from, uh, where the fire station is now, down Birchwood Pike, down Eldridge Road, into the development, to any fire that would be located in here? Yes, sir.
My contention is it won't just be the north side that's used, it'll be the south sides too, and the totally unsafe part. But anyway, I, I, I will say this, I have talked to a plethora of people in my community, and not just the ones on Eldridge Road that are adamantly against it, the general community is adamantly against it. So, I mean, I, plan on my vote being no. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Thank you, sir. That is the last light we have up here. We're gonna move into the ten-minute public comment, and again, it is ten minutes total. So please be mindful of everybody that wants to make comment, try not to be duplicative. And let me remind the, the public that there is nothing before this body to actually vote on. This is purely the public hearing to discuss this project. So I've had emails, please vote no. Well, there is nothing to vote on at this point in time. This is purely the, the public hearing. So just wanted to make sure to, to bring that up in case it had to do with the comments being made. But with that, uh, please come forward, we'll need name and address for the record, and the time will begin.
Laurie DeWark, two-two-five Pee Pool Avenue. Uh, my only comment is, I feel like it's been completely glossed over, that the assumption on the part of the developer is that the, the current market will remain the same, that all these lots will be sold, and therefore it will be financed via that path, rather than leaving the public to shoulder the burden. And I think that's a dangerous assumption.
Thank you.
Rob Dalton, sixty-fifth, sixth Eaglewood. Uh, that road that we're referring to, Eagle, uh, Eldridge, that's only one-third of the road that we're talking about correcting. Two-thirds of it still needs to be corrected, and bridges on the southern side and the northern side are ten-ton bridges. Concrete truck filled is thirty-five ton, so we got two bridges to repair. And additionally, if you wanna go to Chattanooga, you go the south end. You don't go to South Carolina to go to Florida, you go straight to Florida. Thank you.
My name is Shannon Dalton, uh, proudly District Nine, with Commissioner Highlander. We've had a couple of emails, uh, obviously opposed to this. I've, like, this is the sixth time I've, I've come up here and spoke about it. I don't remember what I've said, what I haven't said, but I stand opposed. Uh, it, like my brother just before me said, is unsafe. I tried to get building materials brought in. When I built, they denied me because of the bridge limits. Uh, both sides need to be built up, the whole thing needs to be redeveloped. Uh, opposed as it stands, definitely. Thank you.
Gary Bowles, fifty-eight, twelve Mountain Pass, driving Udoa. So this proposal asks Hamilton County to hold debt so that the developer can build this infrastructure for a high-dollar subdivision in an isolated part of Hamilton County. Who will it benefit? First, it'll benefit the developer, who's gambling with county money in hopes that enough people will buy these homes, pay the yearly tax, plus the five thousand dollar initial fee for their first so, so many acres of developed, uh, of developed land, which of course, uh, will just be passed on to the home buyers. Um, then there's additional land to be developed in the future, and if that part's developed, the rest of it will, will be too, probably, which will mean you'll have to fix the south end of that road. And I did drive it one end to the other. I thought y'all cared about affordable housing for the masses that work at VW or in a bond-
I thought y'all cared about affordable housing for the masses that work at VW or in Avonix. I don't think this is near any of those places. Then we in other parts of the county, such as Harrison and Udoa, have existing development, either recently built or planned in the short term, and get little to nothing in the way of improved roads. Are you kidding? Our CFO, Mr. Browner, does not understand the finances? That bothers me. You know, I really do appreciate the fact that you're going to try to improve infrastructure either before or while you're building, but how about all the rest of us that have been begging for it for years? Thank you.
Kim Hilton, 8618 Snow Hill Road. We feel like this application doesn't meet several requirements in the Tennessee Code. One of those requirements is for all infrastructure to be, shall be constructed in a district in compliance with all applicable laws of the applicable government entity. The subdivision plat is on the planning commission agenda on Monday, and they're asking for a variance for the roads to not have curbs and gutters. That would not fulfill this requirement in the Tennessee Code. The application only assigns assessments to 39 lots instead of the 300 total lots. And the Tennessee Code says that the properties in the area established by the resolution must be subject to the special assessment, so the application is only applying it to 39 lots, not all 300 lots. There's a couple of more sections of the Tennessee Code that I'll cover that, that it has to be the whole property, not just the first 39 lots. That's supposed to be set up in the establishment resolution. So all the property is supposed to be assessed. A full site plan is also supposed to be submitted for the development, a site development plan for the district showing the area in the district that is anticipated to be utilized for residential housing, including older occupied housing and rental housing. And again, we feel that policies and procedures should be set in place, just as other counties and cities have done. And then when the property is subdivided, the assessments are supposed to be reallocated in the portion that's subdivided. The county would be responsible for maintaining all the records, reallocating the assessments when it's subdivided, for the entire length of the development district in existence. Also, the county cannot dissolve the district. It has to be either a vote of 75% of the property owners, or the debt paid in full. So the county would be responsible for enforcing it, collecting, but could not dissolve it. And then we just feel like there's some safeguards need to be put in place, and that is allowed under the Tennessee Code. And, you know, if you could just look at this amortization schedule, it doesn't seem to add up to us. If you have 39 lots that are only being assessed at 1,200 per year, that's $46,800. Your payments are $170,000 plus a year. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Diana Janette, I'm a professional forester, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. David Prince, who borders the whole lower part of this property that's to be developed. And he has a lot of concerns, and there's not enough time to go into all those concerns, but some of the major concerns besides the wildlife is what Mr. Shipley spoke about, and I'm concerned about, is the septic systems. He said the soils can do that, but I have in here and all the stuff, information I could give to you, I've got one for everybody, where most of those soils cannot hold a septic system. Most of the septic systems have to be four feet, six feet down, your water table's at 80 inches, six feet is 72 inches, and you have a fragile pan even further down below that. And then you also have some other problems with water flow, because most of the slopes are 20 to 40% slopes. And more than 400 acres of it is already in that slope count area. Smaller areas are not. But in here, I have some things I could show you, you can read it for now, whether it applies to this one or any other development, you can learn from this. But it also doesn't all hold up roads. According to soils here, most of the soils are not going to hold road in place when there's excessive water. And this is all from the USGS and Corps of Engineers information and the Soil Conservation information I have here. So that's what we're worried about, is water and water flow, change of water flow, because Mr. Prince is downhill from this property. So any change of the contours will change the water flow that goes down to his place for well water, and the creek that's down on his property. So those are the major things we're looking at besides wildlife. There's a lot of other things here that we don't have time to go into. But I think from Mr. Shipley's point of view on the septic, I think I'm very concerned for that. I've been all over Mr. Shipley's, Mr. Prince's property, and on the river below this property, and seeing some things that have happened there, and what comes off of there in soil when, after a rain. So it's very important to think about that, besides all the cost that it is here. But if you'd like, I can leave some of these to you guys and look at them. I know you're going to vote today, but it might be something you want to read about if you have to address it later, and/or any other development that has that kind of a slope to it and water quality problems. Can I give you these?
Ethan Hargraves, District 9. I'm speaking in opposition to this. I've heard a lot of discussion, really good discussion about the feasibility of this plan, and what I don't want to get lost is, even if it's feasible, is it advisable? And more importantly, is it wanted by this community? I'm opposed to this because I love the rural character of our community, and the recent actions on Plan Hamilton and the Snow Hill Road developments leave me highly distrustful of further developments. I've lived on Short Tail Springs my whole life, it's just off of Snow Hill Road. When I drove to work or to various activities, I would pass the hundreds of acres that used to be the Heritage Horse Farm on Snow Hill Road. Now it's hundreds of homes packed in like sardines. When it was farm and horse land, there was a portion of fence that perpetually had a big hole in it, from where cars were constantly going off the road, just single car accidents, high speeds on those tight, on that tight two-lane road with little to no shoulder. In the last couple of years, there's been a new addition, there's now a cross on that road from where a young man lost his life. I'm concerned about any developments that particularly might affect Snow Hill Road. I don't know what this is going to do to additional traffic onto 58, and Snow Hill Road is a popular cut-through. If this is going to have any effect on adding additional traffic to Snow Hill Road, I think we should all be very concerned. I'm concerned about that additional traffic, I'm concerned about the safety of our community, and I'm concerned about preserving our beautiful rural character, and for that reason, I'm opposed.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're not, we're not going to be clapping and disrupting the meeting in here, save that for outside. Not disagreeing with what may have been said, but we're not going to do that. We're out of time. However, I do have a couple of lights, which may prompt a few additional questions, so let's take those, we've got them. Commissioner Beck.
Chairman, if I may ask my colleague, Commissioner Highlander, has there been any community meetings, or anybody talking about this situation up there?
Well, a lot of us have been talking about it, but to my knowledge, Mr. Price, Mistress Reth have not called for a community meeting yet. If they were, I was not invited.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we have set rules and times, but there was only two other speakers. If the proposed side doesn't mind, if you don't mind, if the rest of the commissioners don't mind, can we hear from the last two speakers? It may be like for a minute apiece, or two minutes apiece?
Let's finish these lights, and I'd be happy to entertain that, sir. Commissioner Shipley.
Yeah, something I heard, I'm not sure who said it, is about the interior roads in the new community. Is those roads can be curved, gutted, or they open ditches? What is that? Because I've heard that last week where you're not wanting to curb and gutter, so that water wouldn't be just a free fall to the river. Is that correct? Yeah, go ahead, man.
Now, we've got two minutes coming up. Can we use that time when he comes back up?
Oh, I am.
All right, there's been a request to allow those final two speakers their time. I have no problem with that, as long as there's no opposition from the body. All right, please come back up. Let's give them three minutes total, though.
Thank you. Owen Hargraves, I represent many people in District 9. And like my brother Ethan just said, well, I repeat what much, many of his objections, they reflect my neighbor's feelings and my family's feelings on this matter. And not only that, the previous meeting that I was able to attend where Mayor Womp came up here and stated that the northern parts of District 9 were in need of more public school options, it seemed to be a disconnect between the people who represent us and why we live in the Harrison area. My family has lived in the Harrison area for my entire life, and the reason they live there is because they want to get away from the city of Chattanooga. They want to get away from the downtown feel, they want to get away from everything that overdevelopment would mean for Harrison if this plan moves forward. And that is exactly why we object to this, because we do not want what people in the city want. They do not reflect our feelings in this matter. Those are my objections to this. Thank you.
Kathy Faulkner, 5721 Island View Drive, Harrison, Tennessee. I want to thank you all for listening and allowing us to speak. I want to remind you of a couple of things that happened today. I know there's been a lot transpire, but I want to preface my comments with saying, I'm not against a development district. I think in certain areas, they can be very beneficial and can be a tool for the county to use to move forward with growth and development. However, Eldridge Road is not the site for this place. Mr. Price indicated he would pave one mile. I challenge all of you to go drive Eldridge Road. It is more than one mile long, it has two bridges, one that is failing miserably, as Mr. Highlander pointed out, and there's another one, which is a culvert-type ditch. There's pictures of floods, every time it rains, that culvert bridge ditch overflows, and the road is impassable. So I think if we're going to look at development districts, we're going to seriously consider them, first and foremost, as you know, and as Mr. Browner has pointed out, we have to have policies and procedures in place to guide the development. You're putting the cart before the horse if you're not. I want to point out that Mr. Browner said it would take at least six months to develop those, and Mr. Price came back with three. Don't rush into this, because as Kim Hilton pointed out, once this is developed, the county can't just make an amendment resolution to undo this. It would take 75% of the lot owners, if there are any at that time, to undo what you do if you vote for this. So let's be cautious as we proceed. I do agree it can be a tool. I disagree that Eldridge Road is the appropriate place for it. And I do want to answer Commissioner Shipley's question, in that there has been a request for a variance in the roads in the subdivision that is going to be developed, in that they don't want gutters and they don't want curbs. I suspect, and it's just my opinion, they're saving money on that so they can afford to pave the one mile going in. One mile will not benefit anyone but the people that live there. The rest of the road is deplorable, and this should not be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies, Mr. Price, two minutes to respond.
So the Residential Development Act is a tool that should be utilized. We haven't had any public meetings because there's been no reason to have a public meeting. This is the public meeting. As it relates to the concerns, what I heard out of this is that they're against the development. One person said they understand and they think that this might be a really great tool. We're not debating the development as much as we're debating whether or not to improve Eldridge Road. We all agree the county doesn't have the funding. This is a mechanism. Matter of fact, we had one individual come over here and said, I built out here, and I couldn't get all the lumber because of the bridge. Yet he's still built out here. Yet now he's against us improving the road? That seems to be what we hear before the commission is, there's always the angst against the development, but when we try to come up with solutions to deal with the issues, to deal with the infrastructure, nobody's for it. Well, you can't have both. There has to be a collaboration between the county forces and the rest. The staff, the staff has said, you improve this road, we're for it. You can do your development, we have no issues with you. We then come forward with a proposal to do exactly that, so that staff can say, we'll sign off. Emergency services, we'll sign off. County engineering, we'll sign off. Health department signs off, everybody signs off. That's the proposal. We know there's an issue. We have proposed a solution. There's two issues here to be resolved. One, come up with an overall county position as it relates Rita's. Two, this position. But don't vote no just because you don't like it, you don't like a development. Does Eldridge Road need improving? Yes or no? It absolutely needs improving. It's a terrible road. It's an embarrassment. It needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Commissioner Beck, I see your light, sir.
Yeah, hey, Mike, sounds kind of like this is a, again, as we gather more information, but it sounds like it's kind of a twist on impact fees.
It is.
Why don't you push impact fees? Then everything's on the developer.
Because when you think about it, you want to put it on the developer, okay? But at the end of the day, you're really not putting it on the developer, you're putting it on the end user that has to buy it. That's what this does. So it's basically a de facto impact fee. It's not charging anybody else who lives in this district or this county. It's only impacting those people who buy the lots, who buy the homes. So it is your, is exactly what you want. It's an impact fee.
Without the county's money.
Without the county's money. Because they are paying it. They're paying additional taxes.
We're funding the bond, they're paying us back, hopefully. But it's, why don't you just do it without that, and just do a straight impact fee?
It's simply not a mechanism that will work.
Get the legislation changed.
If the state legislator thinks it's a great idea, I think it's a great idea.
But you've got a lot of lobbyists up there, push it.
I don't have any lobbyists. You can tell that by the votes that I got from at least four of y'all on the board here.
All right, thank you.
Good, sir. Commissioner Shipley.
I never did hear the final answer on the curb gutters.
We don't intend to put curb and gutters. We will do where it would allow sheet flow. Now, understand, there's two issues as it relates to a county standard road, okay? What I look at is what meets a county standard road, is can it support a fire truck, can it support a garbage truck, can it support traffic safely? That doesn't always require curb and gutter. It needs to have a certain pavement width and a certain paving thickness that meets the county's standards. That's all we're doing. Everything from there, essentially sheet flows from there, will go into detention, retention ponds, and then into the river. It doesn't create any environmental impacts, it just simply, if you think of most roads we have in the county, most don't have curb and gutter.
All right. Commissioner Highlander.
Very briefly, my father, many years ago, lost a sister, and uncle and aunt, and several cousins, due to bad well water. And when the water level drops, it's very dangerous, and every, to my knowledge, everyone on Eldridge Road right now is on a well. And I would certainly hate to see them be impacted negatively by that many septic tanks in there. But at any rate, that's just a concern that I've got. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I am hearing two different things. On the one hand, Mike is saying that everybody, the ambulance, the engineers, they think the road is good. But people live there saying the bridge is raggedy and unsafe, and if it's unsafe, why not save the people and close the bridge?
I'd go closing the bridge.
Can't answer that one.
$20 million is what they said for the bridge, like, years ago.
Commissioner Sharp.
Well, I think Commissioner Mackey is touching on an important principle, if nothing else. I hear a lot of conversation about why we shouldn't do things. I always liked the idea of building upon an idea. How do we get to yes? Right? Because a lot of times we come in here, talking about things that we need, like housing, and schools, and roads, and fire, and well, we can't do it. We can't do it because this, can't do it because that, can't do it. You know, I think if we turn the conversation around, how do we get to yes, is kind of a principle, I think, that helps us. principle, I think, that helps us move forward as a community in a way that benefits all of us. So I appreciated, I appreciated those comments. And, and, and in all fairness, I need to learn more about this project itself. And obviously, we're not debating the merits of the project right now, but I suspect we will at some point in the future. So I'd love to follow up on that at some point in time. Thank you, Chairman.
Sure. Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's been a lot of talk about the bridge on the south end. Is there any way, if this were to even happen, and that was like my colleague said, if our finance team says this is a no-go, it's a no-go with me. I mean, our finance team is, is going to determine whether I vote for this or against this. Could it be a good tool? Maybe. But, but until they tell me it is, whether the state voted for it or not, until they tell me it is, then, and explain it to us to where we can all understand it, then I'm, then I'm apprehensive. But, but is there any way to include that other bridge in this project?
Twenty million.
I mean, is it $20 million? I mean, is it?
I don't think it would be 20 million if I had to guess, but at the end of the day, developers can only fix so much. I mean, we, we have limited resources as well. So if, if the bridge-
You said that the, the way that this works is that the people that live in that development will be paying for the road. The rest of us taxpayers are not paying for that road, just right there, correct?
That is correct, but if there-
So is there a way to add that bridge to this funding?
No, because the, the cost ends up being borne by only 300 individual homeowners when it's all said and done. They can't finance that kind of a number. They can finance the completion of a mile of road and a mile of water line, where people currently are on wells can then hook up the city water, so to speak, and, and avoid issues that they may be having with their well. But they can't fix the problems that relates to the south end and, and the bridge. It's just, that's a, literally in this case, it's a bridge too far.
Well, like Commissioner Sharp said, trying to find a way to get to yes, right?
Well, staff says yes. Staff says you do all these things, it's an absolute yes.
Or that, that the staff is wonderful, and I appreciate that, but this commission hasn't said anything yet.
I understand.
So it's, it's going to be up to this commission. But, but I'm trying to figure out a way that, that's going to benefit the entire community. That's why, that's why if there was a way, what we can incorporate that bridge into this red or whatever it's called, that, that would benefit everybody, even the pastors through. Yeah. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I've heard a lot about this bridge and a bunch of speculation. Do we have any idea? May I ask Todd? Todd, do you have any idea as to the estimates of this bridge? What's the span of it? What's the depth of it, all of the various content?
Well, let me only say this relative to the conversation. It's, it's load restricted to 10 tons. It, it's deficient on a couple of lists relative to T-Dot, who does all of our bridge inspections. It's not the only deficient bridge in Hamilton County. And so the issue related to whether you can take a single car vehicle across it and be safe, it is safe relative to that. You cannot take a fire truck to respond to a, to an emergency, or take heavy loaded above 10 tons. So that, that's the issue on the south. I, I don't know the span. We've looked at that bridge before, but that's ultimately a county bridge on a county public road that, based on access, we're, we're responsible for.
Well, yeah, thank you for answering my question. You know, I, I'm just curious, because we go to these conferences all the time, they have trade shows. I mean, there's this great group of folks that we spoke with just a couple of months ago, they're building bridges at prices that, that really shocked me as to how inexpensive they were relative to what I would have thought. But apparently, people do not yet know that we have these meetings in the evenings yet. I'm sorry about that. The, so I was just curious. I mean, it, there are span limitations on those bridges. It would be interesting to know. $20 million is a lot of dag gum money. So that's obviously probably, probably too much. But I was just curious if you had any real numbers there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right, no further lights, no questions. This will end our public hearing on the matter. Ladies and gentlemen that came out to speak to this, thank you very much. The engagement that we get from constituents on these issues is critically important, and I promise you, will have to do with how this body reacts, should this actually come up for a vote. So again, thank you very much for taking the time to be here and speak with us this evening. Truly do appreciate it. Yeah, we'll, we'll just take a, just a one-minute break. For those of you that don't want to sit through the rest of this meeting, please feel free to exit. If you'd like to stay, please, please feel free as well. We'll be right back up here in just one minute.
See, that's what I said.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Just for a second.
Thank you, Chief. Anything wrong when I say?
No.
Thank you, baby. Appreciate it. He didn't bring that.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to continue the meeting. If you are still having conversation, please take it outside. All right, we're moving on. That takes us, we're going down to minutes. We've got minutes needing entered and recorded for October 15th, 2025 Agenda and Regular Meeting. What's the will of the commission?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Graham, second by Commissioner Highlander. The lights, sending roll call, please.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck? Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Eversol?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have two reports to be entered into the record.
Will do, Chairman.
Thank you. Takes us to resolutions. Madam Clerk, please read 1125-1.
Resolution 1125-1, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions and the bonds and notes of notaries previously elected.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Eversol. Lights. Roll call, please.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Eversol?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
All right, without objection, Madam Clerk. Let's bundle 1125-2, 1125-3, 1125-4, 1125-5, 1125-6, 1125-7, and 1125-8.
Resolution 1125-2, a resolution to appoint one member to the Hamilton County Industrial Development Board to serve a six-year term, beginning November 5th, 2025, and ending November 5th, 2031. This resolution appoints Walton Robinson. Resolution 1125-3, a resolution to appoint one member and reappoint one member to the Citizens Advisory Board for Recreation for a two-year term, beginning November 5th, 2025, and ending November 5th, 2027. Resolution 1125-4, a resolution to appoint one member to the Citizens Advisory Board for Recreation for a two-year term, beginning November 5th, 2025, and ending November 5th, 2027. This resolution will appoint Kevin Scott. Resolution 1125-5, a resolution to appoint two members to the Citizens Advisory Board for Recreation for a two-year term, beginning November 5th, 2025, and ending November 5th, 2027. This resolution will appoint Michaela Winter and James Berry. Resolution 1125-6, a resolution to reappoint one member to the Hamilton County Regional Health Council for a four-year term, beginning November 5th, 2025, and ending November 5th, 2029. This resolution will reappoint Dawn Howe. Resolution 1125-7, a resolution confirming the appointment of Brent Goldberg by the county mayor to the Carter Street Corporation Board of Directors to fill the unexpired term, ending March 20th, 2027. Resolution 1125-8, a resolution to appoint one member to the Hamilton County Board of Zoning Appeals for a five-year term, beginning November 5th, 2025, and ending November 5th, 2030. This resolution will appoint Freddie Lehman.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion by Commissioner Eversol, second by Commissioner Baker. I have one light. Commissioner Graham?
I'm going to support this, Mr. Chairman, but, but for future reference, considering what we've been through this term, I think we ought to consider our appointments not extending into the next term. Just throwing it out there so we can all maybe chew on that for a little while and come up with an idea, but, but it, some of these are way past our terms. So that's something I believe we ought to consider, and it would, I think it would help future commissioners and future commissions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Commissioner Beck?
Chairman, maybe one correction, is that Kelvin Scott or Kevin Scott? Kelvin Scott. Correction on that, please. Kelvin Scott.
Madam Clerk, did you get that correction?
Yes, we got that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, seeing no further lights. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Eversol?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Okay, that's resolutions 1125-2, 1125-3, 1125-4, 1125-5, 1125-6, 1125-7, and 1125-8. Pass. Madam Clerk, please read 1125-9.
Resolution 1125-9, a resolution making an appropriation to the launch pad and the amount of $1,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District Three.
Motion approved.
Second.
Who was my motion? I lost it. Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Beck, second by Commissioner Highlander. You know, lights, roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Eversol?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate the support.
All right, Madam Clerk, we're jumping all the way to the end. Please read 1125-15.
Resolution 1125-15, a resolution to allocate unrestricted opioid settlement funds to local food banks to address food insecurity resulting from the federal government shutdown and the temporary pause in SNAP benefits, and to amend the fiscal year 2026 general fund revenues and expenditures of the opioid abatement settlements accordingly.
Motion approved. Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Graham, a second by Commissioner Shipley. Mr. Mayor?
Chairman, thanks for working with us under unusual extenuating circumstances. We felt like this was an urgent item, given the disruption of SNAP benefits to 34,000 members of our community here in Hamilton County. And we worked with Chattanooga Food Bank and others, including SnackPacks, to allocate money that we felt like could help people across our community immediately. And many of you are familiar with these organizations, and we feel like it's appropriate for us to do our part. This comes on the heels of Governor Lee announcing state aid, and, and we hope that you'll join us in bringing the support to these important local partners.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Mayor, thank you for bringing this resolution. Obviously, there's a lot of people that are going to be in need of food as food insecurity expands in our communities and across the nation. I'm going to be supportive of this. I'm curious of a couple of things as to how we came about this number. And do we anticipate that, you know, that this amount should secure food for those in need for the next two weeks, four weeks, eight weeks? We were working off of available reserves of opioid abatement funds that are unreserved, that we, that give us freedom to use those funds how the county sees best fit. We worked with the food bank, trying to understand and assess their need. If I was to make a broad assumption of the state's $5 million, roughly a quarter million of that will flow to Hamilton County. I also would, would hope that better, cooler heads prevail in Washington, the government's not shut down a whole lot longer. I would say part of the answer to your question, rather than being able to give specifics, I think that some of the partners in the room, food banks represented here, Ms. Janice Robertson, who runs SnackPacks as a volunteer, is here. They serve 30 schools. So this, this represents a pretty broad-based approach. Rather than being able to commit to a specific number of people who will be helped by these funds, I, I would say, over the next few weeks, we would like to revisit this. I would hope we don't end up in a scenario where we may come back a few weeks later and say, you know, we'd like to help again, because what we, you know, have, have offered to these organizations has expired. Again, I'm hopeful that two parties in Washington can figure something out, and I think this is a substantial, it's probably inadequate to meet all their needs, but the state's also helping, United Ways help. I think there's community efforts afoot, I hope. I would encourage people in our community, generous community, to support these different organizations. Food Bank is, Chattanooga Food Bank is the leader, but we've worked with them in identifying, you know, the most important partners across the county, from Sadi to East Ridge. And, you know, happy to have you follow up with partners in the community. We don't, we, we hope this is the end of need and will help meet the need, but to, you know, we're unsure. Yeah. I mean, that's, that's a good answer. It's kind of what I was hoping to hear. My other question is, does, actually, I may have three, depending on how this question goes. Does this exhaust those funds? It does not exhaust those funds. We have very diligently budgeted those funds over the course of more than a decade to come. So Vaughn is not here today, I don't believe. but Vaughn DePatrick has worked really closely with our office to project out over the next decade how we use both the restricted and unrestricted, I used the word reserved earlier, but the proper word is the restricted and unrestricted opioid abatement funds. And so we have tried to maintain some reserves as we move ahead because a lot of these payments from the opioid distributor and maker settlements are paid out over several years. Most of the money's paid out over several years. What we have on hand is the upfront payments.
Well, the reason I ask is because I, this resolution's great, I'm glad we're doing it. But one thing that stands out to me is the absence of the Red Bank Community Food Pantry. There's a lot of food pantries here. Red Bank Community Food Pantry does a lot of work, not just in the city of Red Bank. They accept people experiencing food insecurity from any zip code in our area. And I know that, I know that this week they have increased their orders for food by over 50%, hoping that that will meet the anticipated growth in need. But I don't, I don't, we don't know how long that is sustainable. So if there is an additional $10,000 in these funds available, I would like to motion to amend to add the Red Bank Community Food Pantry, along with Sadi Daisy and East Ridge and other food pantries that have been included on this resolution.
There's certainly $10,000, so I have no objection. Yeah, I would say there, we were working fast yesterday through the end of the day with Ken, and I think there probably, technically, probably other food pantries in the community. What we were trying to do is take a pretty broad geographic look, and of course, the Chattanooga Food Bank works with partners all across the county. So at one point, we had considered this would only be the Chattanooga Food Bank, and then we thought to broaden it, and I have no objection at all to an addition.
That's great. Thank you.
Got a second.
That was a motion, yes. Thank you.
Still have a few lights before we get to that.
There it was.
Mr. Graham?
I second it because I was on the founding board that started that food pantry, and I was on that board for many years, and they do an amazing job there, amazing job. And I was glad to help it, even after I was out of office and now that district is still, I'm still on their board for a long time. Thank you to Mr. The Mayor for bringing this. This is going to help my district tremendously, and all these food pantries do a wonderful, wonderful job. So I really appreciate this. I just have a simple question, though, I guess it's for Lee. It is legal we do this, correct? With the opioid funds?
That's a great question.
Yes, there are two pieces to the opioid funds that we are keeping up with. One is restricted and the other unrestricted. So these are definitely using the unrestricted funds, which means we can use them for any purpose, any government-related purpose.
Then I'm all in. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Shipley?
Yes, I want to thank the mayor, number one. His staff, whoever involved in this, it's a big deal for people, especially children. Can you imagine being a child and no food? And that could be what's coming to. I'm lucky tonight, I've got some of my food bank people from Sadi Daisy Food Bank come. And when I told them about this yesterday, it excited them. And I can't remember the numbers. But Chairman, would that be all right, they come up and tell you what $10,000 does for a food bank?
Absolutely.
Come on up here, Graham. It'd buy a lot of food. I'm amazed.
I'm Alan Graham, G R A M, 10931 Old Dayton Pike, and I am the president of the Sadi Daisy Food Bank. And we had our numbers increase about 50% our first service day of the month. And this money will be put to good use.
How much did you tell me that $1,000 buys in either meals or pounds? What did you tell me?
According to USDA, $1 will pay for four meals. So the $10,000 will provide 40,000 meals.
That's good. Thank y'all for coming tonight, hey? And everybody in Sadi Daisy appreciates. It's not a Sadi Daisy thing, these guys furnish meals for, from Middle Valley to the Ray County line, and they do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, the commission and professionally, Commissioner Shipley.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. Mayor, you and your staff, I very much, I also like echo what Commissioner Shipley said. I very much appreciate your bringing this up. Let me also encourage the general public that every organization that is providing food, we appreciate. In addition to that, there are many nonprofits, churches and other nonprofits that are giving out. Let me encourage the community to support every one of these. If you've got someone in your community who has food that people in need, I agree with what Commissioner Shipley said, there are children that have needs, there are older people that have needs. So, Mayor, again, I appreciate you and your staff for doing this, but also I ask the general citizenry to come out and support all the food banks. I know my church has one, a lot of churches do, and a lot of other nonprofits do. So I know Commissioner Hilton, the Elks Club has done it. So please support whatever group you've got, make sure people are fed. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. No further lights. I just want to reiterate one thing that the mayor stated, kind of a last minute, and it was done relatively quick. I believe Monday is when we found out that the benefits would be completely cut off, and here we are Wednesday already with the resolution before this body, and working with organizations to get them on board. So Commissioner Sharp, that's as much on me as anybody else for the oversight of one of the food pantries. So thank you for bringing that up. I'm sure there's others that we've missed as well, and, you know, hopefully, they will be able to work with the food bank for assistance through them as well, since the food bank is definitely central to this and, you know, servicing the entire county and getting a large portion of these funds. So if there are any food pantries left out, I definitely hope you reach out to the food bank and get assistance from, directly from them. But, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate, not just you, but I know, I don't want to take away from the fact that I'm sure it was your staff that came up with this amazing idea. And I want to, I want to thank them as well. To Commissioner Highlander's point, these types of things are heavily supported by our community. We've got an amazing community here, but this will not just replenish this is serving. These food pantries are being completely depleted, and more is needed. So this won't necessarily bring us back up to the levels that they were. So I would like to consider this as Hamilton County taking the lead to encourage other businesses, other governments, to step up and help make sure that these organizations are properly supplied, moving forward even after this ends. And with that, I just, again, thank you very much to the mayor and your staff for bringing this forward. Commissioner Beck, I'm sorry if I missed your lights, sir.
Just one quick comment. I think the churches also would, should step up to the plate and, and help families canvass homes, especially homes around the churches, and make sure that there are no children there that'll go hungry. And then ultimately, families adopting families. We found that to be very effective in our community, just to ask a family to adopt a family if there's a problem that we can help with. It's called sharing your resources with your neighbors. So let's keep all of that, all of those avenues in mind of how we can help, help needing people in these situations. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. We have motioned for an amendment to add the Red Bank Food Bank or Food Pantry for $10,000. I've got a motion and a second. Roll call on the amendment, Madam Clerk. Oh, excuse me.
I think there was some other municipalities mentioned in there, in that motion, wasn't there?
No. Those are already in it.
Okay. The bump, the bump from 10 to 20 is just for Red Bank?
It's just 10.
Okay, so it's across the board, okay. I'm just making sure my paper covered those.
Did you, did you want to take East Ridge out of it and let it, okay, all right, we're good then. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck? Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Eversol?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes. All right, the amendment passes, so we are now going to vote on, take a roll call on the item as amended. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Eversol?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
If I could get a new resolution, Chairman?
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, with that, we, that ends committees of a whole. That'll take us to Finance Committee with Commissioner Eversol. You've got four resolutions, beginning with 1125-10, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Madam Clerk, read 1125-10.
Resolution 1125-10, a resolution authorizing the county mayor on behalf of Hamilton County Government to enter into a second interlocal agreement with the River City Company and the City of Chattanooga for the evolving I Riverfront Parks Framework to complete construction documents for the cost of the second interlocal agreement in the amount of up to $2,200,000.
Okay, we discussed this last week, so make a motion to approve.
I've got a motion, Commissioner Eversol, second by Commissioner Graham. Lights, roll call, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Eversol?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
1125-10 passes.
Madam Clerk, 1125-11.
Resolution 1125-11, a resolution authorizing Hamilton County Parks and Recreation to apply for and accept up to $30,000 per year for two years in grant funds from the Riverview Foundation for the Summer Concert Series at Chester Frost Park to amend the Parks and Recreation Fiscal Year 26 revenues and expenditures budget and assign any documents related to this resolution.
Okay, we discussed this last week. Karen did a great job during the presentation, so make a motion to approve.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Eversol, second by Commissioner Baker. No lights, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck? Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Eversol?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
1125-11 passes.
Sorry, 1125-11 passes, I was waiting on you.
1125-12, please. Madam Clerk.
Resolution 1125-12, a resolution accepting the proposal from Simulator Solutions LLC for the purchase and delivery of a platinum ambulance simulator amounting to $91,850 for the Emergency Medical Services Department, and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
And Ms. Cooper says that she would take every commissioner in this, unless that's a good deal. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, got a motion to approve, by Commissioner Eversol, second by Commissioner Graham. Lights, roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck? Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Eversol?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Chairman Smith?
Yes, 1125-12 passes.
1125-13, please.
Resolution 1125-13, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to enter into a contract with Wolfher Inc. to provide Hamilton County with geographic information system ortho imagery at a total cost of $168,601, and to amend the Hamilton County GIS partnership budget by adding $112,401 to revenue and $112,401 to expenditures.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion to approve, with Commissioner Eversol, second by Commissioner Highlander. No lights, roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck? Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Eversol?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
All right, 1125-13 passes. That takes us to Building and Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Shipley, you've got one resolution, 1125-14, sir.
Got Madam Clerk, 1125-1 board.
Resolution 1125-14, a resolution authorizing free public parking at the Cherry Street Parking Garage during specified hours to enhance the downtown experience.
Go ahead.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Mackey, second by Commissioner Highlander. No further lights, roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck? Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Eversol?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander? Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Chairman Smith?
Yes.
All right, that concludes the items we'll be voting on this evening, takes us into announcements. Commissioner Shipley? Oh, excuse me, I see a light. Commissioner Graham, sorry about that.
I wanted to get this before announcements, if that's all right, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
So last night, I was watching the elections around the world and whatever, and down in Georgia, and I noticed that the, there was a homestead tax exemption for over 80. And I know that several years ago that we voted on a tax, well, we actually voted on a freeze and a relief program. And it turns out that the relief program was better for our citizens than the freeze program. And then that was back when I was on the commission before, I think we did it in like 17 or 18. And Lee, you can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but then we, at the beginning of this term, of this term, we moved it up, the relief program, we moved it up to equal the state, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So, my question is, is it, after they, they put it on a referendum, they passed it, is a freeze still, I mean, is a relief program still better than the freeze, or should we look at the freeze? I mean, is that something that we should look into? And maybe if it has to go on a ballot, we put it on a ballot?
There are a lot of right answers to that question, of course. I, I will tell you, back in the last time we really did a comprehensive look at it, it was determined, at least Finance recommended it, the mayor recommended it at the time, and the commission approved that the better option for Hamilton County was the tax relief program over the tax freeze program.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, that was my resolution. So if I'm not mistaken, the relief program, we were able to attach our program to the state and they administered it, we just, we disqualified people. Whereas if I'm not mistaken, it was Commissioner Smedley at the time, she proposed the tax freeze, but we're, we would have to put on staff, I think Bill Holender would have to put on staff, we'd have to come up with a program. I mean, it was going to be quite a, quite a bit of expense to the county, is that still the case?
I've had recent discussions with the county trustee and the county assessor, each of which believe that if we go with the tax freeze program, they would require additional personnel to be able to administer that.
You'd have to have a special program too, would you not?
Yes, we've never done something like that where you have to verify income and gather information, income information from each taxpayer, and then verify to see which ones qualify.
Could, is, I don't know if this is available to us or not, but can we get some data on how the relief program is working today, and to whether we can enhance that, or maybe add a freeze, or, or things of that nature?
Yeah, we can gather some information for you, I know the trustee is, he's the one primarily responsible for administering the tax relief program. He could provide us numbers, or provide for y'all, or provide to me, and I will provide to you on the number of qualifying participants and the cost of it the last several years, if needed.
Well, we haven't, we haven't tweaked it in about three years, so it's, it's probably a good time to take a deep dive into that and then possibly tweak it. I know it'll benefit my, my district especially, it'll, I mean, I'm not throwing off anybody else's district, but I know it'll, it'll benefit my district tremendously, especially with the, the new stadium coming in, it's going to put a lot of burden on the, the residents of that community. So, I had another question that I want to throw at Finance. Also, in those elections last night that I saw on the news, they had an e-Splosh, and I don't attempt to be a guru or expert on Splosh, I do know what they do. And I saw where Trenton and Catoosa County actually have them already, but they voted to increase theirs by 1%. And then, the Homestead Act, the Homestead Education Act went into play and it got approved in Chickamauga. Is that something that would benefit Hamilton County? Is that something that we should look into about helping our schools, maybe put it on a ballot? We're going into election season, we got two, two opportunities for ballots coming up. Is this something that we, we could really talk about and let the citizens decide whether they want to do this or not?
That question may be better for, well, the mayor seems to be walking up, or the county attorney, oops, or the county attorney, but it's, it's my understanding that Splosh's special option sales tax agreements are not legal in Tennessee.
Okay, well, I'm just curious, I just wanted to know, I saw that as an opportunity last night when I was watching news, and I didn't, I didn't know if that was an opportunity, which leads me to my last question, and it has to do with special taxing information. The state is helping us on Russell Boulevard, and the city is helping us on Russell Boulevard, and I'm wanting the county to partner on Russell Boulevard. I'm wondering if, if going forward, maybe you can help me with this, if there is some way that we could come up with a special tax district or a special tax incentive to incentivize, the state's going to pave the road, going to improve the road, fix the drainage, the city's already got money allocated for, for beautification, but there's really no real incentive for businesses to really want to open up in Russell Boulevard? And, and some of us older guys, I remember when, when Mazda used to be on there, when Economy Honda used to be on Russell Boulevard, and, and it used to be a really thriving part of town, and it's still got the potential to do it again, it just needs a little boost. And so, is there something that, that's available, or something we can work on that, that would help with that area?
Long pause to say, I don't know.
Can you get with me on that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Sharp, I'll see your light. Just reminder of everybody, this is just prior to announcements, so let's get to announcements after Commissioner Sharp has his comments.
Oh, that would be great, thank you, Chairman, I kind of, I, I didn't know where we were in the meeting, to be honest with you. This was some interesting dialogue. As a matter of fact, on Monday, the 10th, I have a meeting planned with our trustee to talk about a tax freeze. I brought the tax freeze up several months ago, and I intend to follow through with it before the end of the year. There are expenses involved with calculating that information and putting it together, but we're already doing it to a certain extent for the city of Chattanooga. So we're going to figure that out. City of Chattanooga just implemented a tax freeze. So, it is my intention to bring before this body a tax freeze resolution to give the senior citizens of Hamilton County the peace of mind in our holidays, that even if there is a tax increase next year, they will not see a tax increase if they are within the parameters set in the resolution. That should be forthcoming, provided that our attorney and Mr. Hollander can work that out over the course of the next couple of weeks. So, I just wanted to say that. And also, interestingly enough, I had a conversation with another county mayor from the state of Tennessee in another county who has implemented a local option sales tax via referendum on multiple occasions to fund school projects. I just had that conversation today while I was sitting in the pickup line at school this afternoon, and I think that is something that we should explore. It was heartwarming, for lack of a better term, for me this morning to watch the election results and see that 72% in one county and 91% in another county voted for additional special taxes to fund school projects. Neighboring counties, I would like to think not too different from the folks that we represent. And, and we, we've struggled to pay for those things. So I think, yeah, that's something we should do. And, and, and put that before the people. As a matter of fact, I wrote a Chattanooga Times Free Press editorial on it just a few months ago. But anyways, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that's something that's being in the works right now. And I hope that, I hope that all of you guys will go ahead and begin considering those things in your minds as to how it could impact the lives of people that live here in our county. And I look forward to more conversation about it. Thank you, Chairman. And we also have announcements here.
We are about to get into announcements.
Thank you.
I'll reserve just a little bit more time for you, though. Only one correction, the city of Chattanooga has had a tax freeze for many years, not just.
They've decreased the.
Because, yeah, I passed that. All right, thank you. Freeze. All right, we're moving into announcements. Commissioner Shipley.
No announce.
Commissioner Baker has no announcements. Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chair. Before the mayor left, I had wanted to thank him for, for the resolution he brought forward about food. What I'm curious about is if residents in our district can't afford healthcare, will we do anything about that?
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Beck. Commissioner Sharp, back to you, sir.
I don't do that. Thank you, Chairman. I got distracted there for a minute. Yeah, the only announcement I have for today, it's on my Today in History, it was pretty interesting to me that on this day, November 5th, 1872, Susan B. Anthony cast an illegal ballot and was arrested. Commissioner Shipley says he remembers that. It wasn't until 48 years later that the 18th Amendment was ratified granting women the right to vote. Takes a lot of things to do, a lot of time sometimes to do the right thing. And, you know, and a lot of hard work to get people to do it. Yesterday, amongst others, the state of Virginia elected its first woman to be their governor. There's a lot of years to do that, but I just thought that that was fascinating, and I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention, they weren't able to just read that this morning like I did. So, thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Chauncey. Commissioner Highlander.
Thank you, Chairman. Briefly, there were two, two lives that left this world the last week that, that had a lot of impact on a lot of people. One of them was Deborah Ann Mackey, she was a teacher, she impacted a lot of lives, and, and I very, she was active in her church, I understand, and she's active in the things of God, and I appreciate that. And we need to honor her, her family, Dr. Mackey, her brother. Also, a gentleman, a friend of mine, Don Lyons, served 33 years in the United States Marine Corps, did, he fart, he did two tours in Vietnam. He was a combat helicopter pilot in the first term, and a combat jet pilot in the second term. Then he commanded the Marine Combat Training, Pilots Training School, and city high school And he has gone home to be with the Lord, and also active with his family and church. And Deborah Ann Mackey, Don Lyons were two wonderful people that impacted a lot of people in our community, and I hope you would honor their memory as, as we consider their home going. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Eversol.
Now, just real quick, I wanted to thank some folks, because this is our first, I guess, late afternoon, evening meeting. When I presented this resolution a couple of months ago, there was a lot of pushback on it, and still is, and I understand that. You know, it's no big deal. I just wanted to do this and this, to do this with the thoughts of getting more people involved from the general public in our meetings. And I wanted to thank the county attorney's office, because it, you've had to shuffle a lot of things. The clerk's office had to shuffle a lot of things. Mayor's office had to shuffle a lot of things. And I know the sheriff's office had to shuffle a lot of things. So, I think it's important that we recognize them for, you know, stopping and really turning on a dime, so that we could make this meeting available for the general public and hopefully get some more folks involved in these meetings. Right now, it's, is temporary for November, December, we're going to decide in January how this looks moving forward. So I will continue to, to be an advocate to say, general public, if you want access, then this is your chance to show up, be involved in the meetings. These meetings are really designed for public for a reason, it's for you to be here when things that matter to you, and even when things don't matter, still show up. Because you're, it's very important that you, you get to see the workings of the commission, and you get to see how we work on your behalf. So, so I appreciate, appreciate, Mackey there. Mr. Mackey's yawning there. Oh, was that, I'm sorry, Shipley. He was, wake him up over there, Mr. Mackey.
He told the bad about when.
But no, I just wanted, I just want to thank the groups that had to do things different, because it's, it's, it's not as easy, it's not just snapping a finger and it happens, it, it takes a lot of work behind the scenes. So thank you all for making it happen, so thank you. And normally, I would think the chair would probably have at least dinner for us.
Maybe at some point in the future, we'll work on that. Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, last week being Halloween, there was many Halloween events in the district, and I got to catch a bunch of them, I didn't catch them all, but I got to catch a bunch of them, and, and it was really quite pleasing to see that so many communities came out, and so many communities had so many great events for the children in the community that, that it wasn't, it wasn't lost in the adults either, but, but it was, it was a great Halloween, and, and I was proud to be a part of that. This Saturday, Lookout Valley Elementary School is having their Fall Festival, it's like from 10 to 2, and it's a pretty good event, I'm hoping the weather's going to hold out, but, but, and then also this Saturday, the Lookout Valley Community, we've been doing it for many years now, we put crosses out for all the military people that have lived, or a family member that lived in the valley. And so we line up Brownsville Road with, there'll be about 350 crosses out there, give or take a little. And we, we line up Brownsville Road from Cummins Highway to the freeway on both sides. So if you all are out in the next few days, we leave them out this Saturday, we'll put them out, and we leave them out through Veterans Day, and we take them up next Saturday. But it's, it's really a sight to see, and the way the community comes together and puts those out, David, you've probably seen it, but, but it's really, it's really a nice way that our community says thank you and remembers the veterans that have passed, and as most of you know Ray Atkins, he just passed recently, so, so he has a cross as well, but, but it's really neat to see. So if you get a chance, come down Brownsville Road. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Attorney Bonnell.
I just wanted to say thanks to everybody for coming to the open house today, especially all the county employees that also had to come here. My staff put in a lot of work into that office, and they're happy to show it off. So, if you didn't get to come, come see it, thanks.
Mayor Womp. Senator Mead, I had no particular announcements, other than to reiterate a little bit of what Commissioner Eversol said, just thank you to everybody, mainly the citizens that are here this evening, thank you for coming. This is, again, why we are trying this later, to see what kind of attendance and to make sure that we make ourselves more available during meetings. So again, thank you all, and thank you to the staff. Macy, congratulations on your first run, fully in the seat, very well done, I appreciate it, and the entire clerk staff, thank you for being here and, and supporting us this evening, as, as well as the rest of the mayor's staff. Commissioner Shipley, your, your light, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, I mentioned Hampton County Fair starts Friday evening at 5:00, and we need a lot of people to be there. Christie Cooper is going to ride a bunkin' bronco with us, and we want to make sure we see that. No, everybody come up, it is a good time. I know you're there, Commissioner Eversol, it's a lot of fun.
Commissioner Highlander, do you have another comment?
Just very briefly, I, to piggyback on what Commissioner Shipley said, the Fund for Excellence says coupon books is having a pre-fair for all the kids that sold two or more books, and several of us will be up there tomorrow, in God's Country and Sunday Daisy, Mr. Shipley, with that, and I, I'm thankful for that, but I'm thankful for the mayor and his staff for allowing Fund for Excellence to work with that. And Ms. Varnell, I'm going to tell you why, she let me get a preview of her office last week, and it is phenomenal, it's a very professional looking office, and, and I was honored to get to go through that last week. Thank you, ma'am. And Patricia, thank you and your group for all you do every, all the time, thank you.
All right, to close this out, just real quick, just so that everybody knows, there will be no meeting on 11/26 due to the Thanksgiving holiday, there will be a joint meeting on December 3 instead to make up for that, and there will be no meeting on December 31 due to New Year's holiday. And we'll also have a joint meeting the following on January 7 to make up for that meeting. Just want to make sure to get those announcements out. Automatically off. Yeah. All right, with that, we will move into public comment. If there's anybody from the public that would like to address the body, please come forward and start with your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Teres Thule, and my address is 1005 East Dallas Road. And as a volunteer with the grassroots group Citizens for Hamilton County Commission Engagement, I thank the commissioners for this two-month trial period of a 4:00 meeting time. It is a significant step towards establishing a more accessible meeting, accessible meeting time for citizen engagement. Our Hamilton County Commission has been the only body of publicly elected officials who meet at this morning time. All other elected bodies in Hamilton County meet at 3:30 PM or later, so we appreciate that you're giving this a trial period. I have a confession to make, as I'm retired from the workforce, I like the 9:30 time. But given my flexible schedule, I can easily adjust to a time that is in sync with more of my fellow citizens' schedules. Commissioners and Mayor Womp, you really need the attendance of not necessarily more of Hamilton County citizens, I would say you need a more varied and representative group of informed citizens here. You need a meeting time that allows the people who work standard business hours to attend our county commission meetings, so that more citizens can be a part of our commission's governance. In closing, a variety of citizen input is key to making our local government more representative and responsive, and an after-working hours meeting time will help residents to be able to engage and feel more connected to their local government, something we can all agree is necessary for authentic and successful local government outcomes. Thank you all very much.
Nathan Griffin, 5500 Hidden Oaks Lane. Good evening, commissioners. I'm one of four co-founders of the grassroots organization Save Enterprise Nature Park. Earlier today, we sent letters to your offices with our contact information and a request to meet with each of you to discuss this matter in more detail. I know some of you have already responded, so I thank you very much for that. We sincerely appreciate your time, attention, and willingness to hear from us. Today, I wanted to focus on the economic reality of industrial development at Enterprise South Nature Park. Having received my bachelor's in economics and a master's in business administration, this topic hits home for me. There is a belief that industrializing this protected land is necessary for job creation, but when you look, step back and look at this at a macro level data, a very different picture of our emerges. Modern manufacturing relies on automation and robotics, that means far fewer jobs than traditional manufacturing. Facilities like Novavax, which is currently right next door, going right next door into Enterprise South Nature Park, have job densities of only about two to three jobs per acre. Meanwhile, Enterprise South Nature Park serves hundreds of people every single day, from hikers, runners, mountain bikers, and families, all generating activity, value, and utility that industrial acreage simply does not. Hamilton County's economic growth is not being driven by industrial employment, it's being driven by a quality of life, clean air, forests, trails, and access to nature. A University of Tennessee at Chattanooga 2003 study found our metro area gained nearly 3,900 more young adults than it lost, that's a 7.4% increase, or net in-migration rate. These new residents tend to be college-educated, higher income, and they bring long-term spending power that supports local businesses, restaurants, real estate, and the creative economy. And the reasons for moving here exactly match what the data shows. In interviewer, in interviews, newcomers consistently cite outdoor recreation, mountain biking, and that Chattanooga's natural beauty as the top reasons they chose this city.[1796.33] My own family is part of that statistic. We didn't know anybody. We moved specifically here for Chattanooga for the outdoors. The city we came, the city we came from had plenty of industrial jobs. What it didn't have was what Chattanooga has, a natural environment that improves your life every single day. That is the economic advantage that we stand to lose. If we remove federal protections and open up Enterprise South to industrial development, we risk far more than just a few hundred acres. We risk the talent pipeline that chooses Chattanooga for its outdoor lifestyle. We risk tourism dollars and recreation spending. We risk property value stability for neighborhoods near the park. And we risk the national identity we earned as America's first national park city. Industrial development may offer short-term revenue, but selling protected parkland undermines the long-term foundation for our economic success. The data is clear. Outdoors beats industry and Enterprise South Nature Park is one of the greatest economic engines this country, this county already has. Thank you for your time and again, we look forward to meeting with each one of you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. My name is Michael Holloway. I reside at 9356 Roar Mountain Drive in District 7. I would like respectfully request the minutes to reflect, I second everything that Mr. Griffin just said about Enterprise South and preserving the protected land. I would like my taxpayer money, to use Mr. Eversol's words, to go to continue preserving the protected land. I understand that that is not before the committee tonight or the commission tonight on its agenda, so I'm not going to belittle that point. One thing that did strike my attention that is on the agenda, there are 34,000 people in this county impacted by the SNAP withholdings from the federal government. Estimates show that 182,000 residents potentially are impacted by these deed restrictions being changed. So if we're considering the impact on numbers of the residents, I would encourage the commission to consider that number. To echo something I believe Commissioner Sharp said, I firmly support my tax dollars supporting education. I don't know that everyone in this room feels that way. I know not everyone in the county feels that way. Please use my tax dollars to further education projects and public education in this county. To address the food shortages, some churches have food kitchens, soup kitchens, pantries, et cetera. Mine does not. However, my church just finished an hour of a free meal available to anybody in the community. Christ United Methodist Church in East Brainerd has community cafe every Wednesday from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. I would encourage people who cannot make ends meet, who cannot afford food, go there on Wednesdays for a free meal. Good community. Two more things. Appreciate the evening hour, makes it a lot easier for those of us that do work during the day to make it here. In my previous professional life, I shared a similar role as Ms. Varnell. And I would just share with all of you commissioners that when I did fill that role for the city of East Ridge, we would occasionally take the council or the commissioners out to dinner. So dinner should be on the attorney's dime later tonight for you guys. Sorry, Ms. Varnell. And last but not least, I'm not going to say that anything I addressed tonight is any more important than the other, but this is on my heart, given that it is Veterans Day next week, like Commissioner Graham said. I just want to remind everyone kind of humorously that none but the shades of cavalry men dismount at Fiddler's Green. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my commissioners. Thank you for this time to speak. I come with Nathan Griffin with Save Enterprise South. And I'm Gloria Culpepper, 7236 Teaberry Court. My property is a property that is specifically impacted by the 500 acres. We backed right up to it. I've lived there 30 years and have enjoyed the continuation of the proper Enterprise South Park and the overflow, of course, with the periphery of it. And that is what we are discussing. So we know we're not discussing the proper part of Enterprise South, but the outer periphery part. And that is impactful to us and for the quality of life that we've enjoyed, for the woods that are there, the animals, the environment. All of our neighbors that border that, there's several hundred homes. And of course, there's 300 plus homes in Flagstone where I am, and then you've got Hunter Village. It's, I understand that the location of it does look pretty, pretty good. You know, you've got Volkswagen on the other side. You've got Hilltop Drive that everybody's talking about. You've got the freeway right there. What's concerning me is that you take this beautiful core part of Enterprise South Park and it's going to be encapsulated by all this industry and manufacturing. And no one wants to see the glow of white lights at night from a neighborhood. You've got neighborhoods that border that. You've got a park right there and you've got that sort of buffer of land. And 500 acres, give or take, it's a small amount, it's a large amount, however you want to look at it. But I would say keep that amount to Enterprise South. Please, I do deeply oppose it. I deeply oppose already our value. We have a realtor in the neighborhood and we've got people wanting to sell a home and it's already dropped 10% and it's going to continue to drop because no one's going to want to buy right there. We had a little acreage and it butts right up and you'd think, wow, it's perfect. Run a cul-de-sac, we've got enterprise behind us. And now I've got an industrial development. And it isn't just me. I want this for my neighbors. I want this for Hunter Village. I want this for all of us. It's rare. We've already talked about the overdevelopment on Snow Hill Road, on Mountain View, I'm counting down. And we've already talked about this. I want a vision for Oodawah. I want a vision for it to be, to keep the small town, somewhat small town. Of course, we're pro, you know, economic growth, but we don't want to lose it to industry. We don't want to lose it to just that area. I'm sure there's other options. Please, please pursue them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Laurie Dewark, 225 Pee Pool Avenue. I'm here primarily because of something that is outside of the purview of this body, but it is not getting anywhere near the attention it deserves. Marty Haynes has been the assessor of property for about 10 years now, so it's shocking for him to have made such an egregious error with regards to the Red Bank property tax rate. It makes me question whether he should even be in this office. He doesn't have the excuse of being new to the position. So did he just get lazy or does he not care about the catastrophic shortfall his error has imposed on our small city's very tight budget? He has admitted that this error, which remember is the single most important element of his job, was entirely his fault, but it seems there will be zero consequences for Mr. Haynes, or at least until the next election.
Hey, ma'am, let me interrupt you. We do have a policy about not disparaging people at that podium. It's not its purpose. So if you would like to make comment, keep it without the intent of disparaging despite what your feelings may be.
Okay. Communities, large and small, rely on the assessor of property to accurately assess and collect taxes so that our government services can be properly funded. He has shown that he cannot be trusted to execute the fundamental duties of his position. And since he cannot be trusted with this awesome responsibility, it is my opinion that the only honorable thing to do is that he resign that position immediately. Unfortunately, that still leaves the city of Red Bank scrambling to cover the $750,000 shortfall with no recourse. And I would like for each and every one of you to think about how a commensurate amount of shortfall to your budget would affect your ability to do your jobs to serve the Hamilton County constituents. And if there is anything that you can do to support Red Bank, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Mark Hendon, 2907 Leggett Road. Kind of wanted to piggyback off of that. I would ask that the mayor, because I think that that does fall under one of his responsibilities, call for an audit of our tax assessor. And I ask that you guys please help him understand that duty and enforce that audit, please. My next thing is, like Mr. Graham described multiple times with the previous presentation, I didn't get the chance to talk then. He referred several times to the importance of the legal advice that you guys were getting in regards to this proposition that is being had. I will read you a statement. I think it won't take you guys long to realize what this statement is about or regarding what. At the end, I'll tell you just to make sure. "The property shall not be sold, leased, assigned, or otherwise disposed except to another eligible government agency that the Secretary of Interior agrees in writing, can assure the continued use and maintenance of the property for public park and public recreation purposes, subject to the same terms and conditions in the original instrument of the conveyance." Mr. Graham was very concerned about the legal implications of some of these things. I believe that this representation of Hamilton County should be incredibly concerned of the legal implications because the federal government gave us this land so that we could do something good for our community, but they put a stipulation to it. And that stipulation was that that land would be ours as a public park and recreational area. In perpetuity stands out to me a lot. I would ask that you please consider this. You are representing us and this county does want to grow, but we do not want to grow in that way because it does not benefit the county. It does benefit some county members, but it does not benefit the county at large. Please consider. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other business, we'll be in recess until November 12th at 4:00 PM.